And the light is on. Good evening. Welcome to the January 21st Town Council meeting. We called the meeting to order, and at this time we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time we'll have a roll call.
Councilor Bevine?
President.
Councilor Donovan?
Here.
Councilor Katerina?
Present.
Councilor St. Clair?
Here.
Councilor Blaze?
Here.
Councilor Fede?
Here.
Councilor Chair Holbrook?
I am here too, so we will go ahead and move on to general public comments, item number four. And you see him shaking his head that he does not want to speak, our only member in the audience this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and close general public comments. And item number five is minutes of the January 7th regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second, and is there any discussion? All right, and seeing none, all those in favor? And moving on. There are no adjustments to the agenda, and I will sign items for treasure warrants as we go along in the meeting, which there is no old business. And so for new business tonight, we have order number 15-005, first reading the proposed amendments to the Chapter 1301, the General Assistance Ordinance pursuant to Title 22 MRSA 4305. And Tom, would you mind introducing that?
Sure. For those returning councils, you'll recall seeing this, this is kind of an annual, I'll call it rite of passage. Essentially, the state dictates what the GA, that's General Assistance, amount should be, and those do change year to year. And what you have before you are the state recommended, and frankly, we have no latitude other than to accept them. So their recommendation, incidentally, we did try to have a blanket action of the bar of councils such that this would just happen routinely, but we've been since directed by the town attorney that we really need to have the council take annual action to approve them. Tody also has a little update she'd like to share with you.
As of this evening, I received Appendix D, which includes adjustments to utilities, which are electricity, heating fuel, personal care, and household supplies. So I'll clean those out. That would need to be amended to be included in this first reading.
Okay.
That we didn't get any practice.
All right, so is there a motion to amend?
Motion to amend. So what?
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry. Actually, first is comment. So is there anybody that would wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, we will close the comments. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We would need an amendment.
Yeah, we need a first to amend the main motion. Is there a motion for that?
Still moved.
And a...
Second.
And any discussion? All right. Motion on the amendment, which would be to just include the document, the document Appendix D.
Still moved.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor on the amendment? All right, and back to the main motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, and seeing none, all those in favor? And that's a vote.
Thank you.
All right, on to order number 15-006, first reading and refer to the planning board on the proposed amendment to Contract Zone 5, Scarborough Realty LLC Mercedes-Benz Dealership, located at 137 US Route 1. Again, I'll let Tom kind of just bring us all up to speed on this. Before I do do that, I did want to just mention, I appreciate that this is not entirely, you know, not a workshop item that we had done. I didn't particularly think that the scope of this was really outside of, you know, it's already a contract zone. I think it's only maybe a quarter acre.
Yeah.
So I didn't really feel that it was necessary to have an entire workshop on this item. So it is in front of us today. So Tom, if you would, if you would just kind of talk about what this is.
With that, we certainly do have representatives here from Primoto Group who are going to provide some better detail on the contract zone. But quickly, by way of background, in 2002, this council approved a contract zone that allowed redevelopment of that site. It predates me, but I understood it was a fairly rundown industrial-looking type site. What, by way of further background, one of the standards, a basic fundamental threshold question for contract zones has to do with improvements to the community. And I think it was found pretty clearly by that prior council that what we see there today is a vast improvement over what existed prior. And what you'll hear this evening is a slight expansion of that contract zone to incorporate an abutting parcel, a small parcel. And with that, is it Dan Dusset?
Yes.
Dan is here to perhaps provide you a little more detail on their proposal. Dan, I would ask that you take the handheld mic and speak into that while you're there. You got to turn it on or put it in your mouth.
This is good right here. What we're looking to do is take the Sunoco station and tear it down, get rid of all the structures and the current signage, get rid of the two curb cuts that exist, and take the stormwater and manage it on our own stormwater management system relative to where it's handled now, which is sheeting off into the street. This is the current look, and this is what we'll end up with here. This is overhead look. This is what the Sunoco station is now, and you can see here what we're looking for. Basically, we're not looking to put any structures, just additional display and parking area. We are looking to add on to the building right here, but to remain within the current contract zone specifications. We're not looking to increase that square footage at all. We're just looking to complete the initial approval. Would you like to pass this over there?
Yeah, no.
I think we actually have a follow-up in the packet.
All right, well, so real quick, so that's just kind of a overview. At this time, what we'll do is we'll take any public comment, if there is any, and then we'll need to get a motion on the floor so that we can ask questions if we'd like. So is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the comment section. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
First and a second, and so is there any discussion or any questions? Peter?
Yeah, just maybe a little bit of history or context. I think I've talked to a couple of the councils that were involved under the original sort of approval. And I think it was important though that they had some type of green sort of setback so the cars weren't right on the road. Can you kind of update us what their thinking was then?
Uh, yes.
And what you're thinking is now, and how many spaces are going to be right on the curb?
Yes, okay, so initially, I was at, initially, we had the approval meetings back when we first built this building.
Yeah.
And the council back then was not interested in looking like a car dealership at all. It was, they wanted to look like a business park. And we had since come before the planning board, and I don't know if you remember, but it was initial approval with a big hump here. You couldn't even see the building. We came back and they amended that. So we were able to lower that. It looked like there was a big hill here. So in order for this to work for us, a 40-foot setback wouldn't work here because it would leave no land for us. So we're looking to, because this is not a very deep piece of property.
Yeah, no, I see that.
There's no advantage for us to buy it unless we could have this parking here. So how many cars in the front line? There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 11 cars in the front line.
11.
Okay, because I'm just thinking, I think, because I think the same sort of strategy applied to the Jaguar dealer that's further down.
Sure.
They're also set back.
Yes.
So just wondering how they might react. So I'm just wondering, is there any compromise where there can be some green or some...
Well, you know, we look at compromise, and that piece of property is no debt to it at all.
There's no way for them to go.
I just wanted to help maybe answer a question a little bit. I had Tom look it up. It's actually .2125 of an acre. So it's actually less than a quarter of an acre. So I just, just so everyone understands how big the parcel is. Did you finish your question, Peter?
I guess my only question was whether there was any space at all to set those cars a little further back, and I can't, looks like there's some space. That was my only question, whether there's some accommodation that can be made to kind of preserve the original council's view.
So our cars will actually be in line with the cars of the adjacent piece of property that runs adjacent to that lot?
That's what I was just going to ask you. They'll actually line up.
They line up with the...
Down here.
With the building and everything.
So it's the same space.
Yeah, well, the planning board will have their own requirements and whatnot. But Councilor Bevine?
Two items historically. One is, before being elected to the council or school board, I actually had a chance to speak on in favor of this project because I actually live off of the Portland Farms Road at the bottom of the hill, if you know where that is in comparison to the structure. So I remember the old structure. I think that the current development has not only met its expectations, but actually exceeded that. And I actually believe that even the new development exceeds that and actually brings it into line even more favorably than what was originally proposed. Because I was on the council when it was actually brought in.
Oh, okay.
So there might be other councils that differ and had different opinions, but I've been very favorable given the development of that particular project. And I do like this. I think it's aesthetically pleasing, and it's very appealing based upon, even its setbacks, if you think about it, and you think about where the cars setback now, it is really no different in comparison to where, what they're adding, which is nothing more than 11, was it 11?
11.
Car parking lot. Nothing against the, nothing against the gas station that's there now. I just think that it's contiguous with what the current use is, and it's very appealing and should be moved forward.
Any other questions or comments for this item?
No.
All right, thank you for your time. My two cents will be, you know, I think the Sunoco is an eyesore. And it is, you were very much more polite about it, Sean. I think at this point in time, it's also probably, you know, you look at with these things, well, what can happen here? Well, it can say a gas station. It's not a good location for a gas station. That's a dangerous section to try to be pulling in and out of. So I was glad to read that your proposal does include getting rid of all the curb cuts, closing it off. You're going to make it look clearly a lot nicer than it does now. So it does have my support.
I will mention that this will not stop the people who run that red light.
[laughing]
We're one, and that is a concern, but that has nothing to do with your property.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, they won't pay attention.
They're horrible, by the way.
Are you going to put the real expensive cars out there?
Yeah, well, it's probably all Mercedes, so, yeah.
All right.
They're all expensive. Smart cars.
So we do have a first, we have a second, and refer to planning board.
Sure do.
And so at this time, we'll vote, all those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Number eight?
Looks like a nice addition.
Yeah.
Really does.
Action. All right, so item number eight is non-action items. We have none, so we will move to item number nine, which is standing in special committee reports and liaison reports. And we'll start down on your end, Sean.
Oh, always. So I actually share a couple with Council Donovan, so we'll piggyback a little bit, if everyone doesn't mind. First is with finance. I actually want to hand out a couple of, several handles, actually. I'll just pass these down. The first is, I couldn't remember exactly what I had passed out at the last meeting, so I'm going to pass it out again. Really, what this is, is a synopsis statement of the budget process improvement suggestions that were agreed to with the joint session of the school board. There are six items, seven items that we kind of came to a conclusion that we would like to look at and how we really move to the next stage, which is forming what we call norms, or norms of procedures. And that is how we relate to each other, how we work together going forward with our budgets, as well as with the presentation of the entire budget for the town so that it's more cohesive and really one entity that presents that forward. So this is the final document. What's going to happen next is that our next meeting is tomorrow at 1:30. It is here in Chambers. And really, the purpose of that meeting is to define those norms. I hate to admit it, but I actually kind of consider that meeting to be relatively short. We're all professionals, we're all grownups. I would hope that we all treat each other as such, and therefore, it's really very simple for us to define how we want to communicate going forward. The issue is going to be not how we determine what we want, it's how we then measure what we have done after the fact. So we're going to be cognizant of that fact as well. The other piece that I wanted to send down the line, I think I did, did I?
Yes.
Is the second page, which is really the finance committee's schedule for the new year that is not defined yet.
I was going to say it's all zeros.
It's all zeros, but I want you to at least be aware of how it was set up in the past. We are going to be looking at that. That is our second task at the joint session tomorrow, to really come down with that. I will tell you that the focus really is being driven from a, what I'll call, an enterprise perspective. It's not about the historical perspective of where we take our budget, and we literally go line item by line item, but we look at the major cost drivers. We look at what are the drivers that are causing us for increases? What might be some of the decreases, if there are any? And then really driving it from that, including new investments, closing out old investments and things such as that at both levels, and really coming up with a schedule. I will tell you that there seems to be some motivation to have the schools' budget and the school presentation a little earlier in that cycle so that we can absorb what they have presented to us and really partner with them in presenting a unified budget on behalf of the town. I will report back to you what the outcomes are after tomorrow's meeting, but we're really still at that infancy stage where we haven't really defined too much, but we are at least moving that forward. Everyone's schedule has been a little bit difficult because of illnesses and conferences and whatever it might be, so I do apologize for not getting a little faster, but we are at least on schedule, if not ahead of schedule. And the last item that I'm going to pass out that I want to at least forward down is something that I presented to our council. We had, actually had a council of finance committee meeting on January 14th. And really, what I want to ask you to do for me and for the council committee is to help me prioritize what we want to look at in retrospect to the budget, whether it's county government, main revenue sharing, police services, whatever it might be. If you can categorize within three categories of highest, medium, and lowest priority, there are six categories within each of those. Hopefully, you can keep that to at least 18 items. I can definitely email it to everyone. But the goal is that if you can help me by telling me you want me to look in your highest priority county government because of the increases that have happened, because then I will prioritize with outside resources to bring County Commissioner Jameson or the county manager, who's also a Scarborough resident. I'll look at bringing those services in so that we can then have a conversation about it, and this will help that. I do want to mention that the manager, based on our conversation, is looking at how we present our budget and trying to streamline that budget process so that we truly become an executive board and that we look at the major enterprise global initiatives. That does not mean that we can't, in my best word, deep dive into some of the data because what will become supplement to the bigger picture conversation is the line item issues. Because everyone has, you know, why did this increase 300%? Or why are we funding X, Y, and Z? You know, those type of things. So there's going to be an evaluative process that allows you to still vent and still ask those questions. But the goal is that at this level, that we really look at the bigger picture because there's so many things. And really, the consensus is, at least what I've heard so far, is that going line item by line item is just so innocuous. And it's just, the question is, is that really valuable, especially for a manager? But that doesn't mean that we're not going to hold departmental managers accountable. It just means that we're going to approach it slightly different so that we can ask the right questions. And our goal is that we're going to keep you informed, we're going to keep you involved, ask you how you want to proceed with that so that everyone is engaged. But then we respect the fact that we have, I'm herding a lot of cats. And so I'm trying to make, you know, our joint committee very workable, our individual committee very workable, and I think that we can come up with a very reasonable result at the end, and everyone will be very happy with that. So I do appreciate that, and I want to, again, I just want to thank Chris Ciasso, who is the school board's chair, for cooperating and really working together in this process. And I'm looking forward to tomorrow's outcomes because I think it's really going to set us down the right path. But there's a lot of work based upon what we've heard from the administration about what we're going to do. So keep that in mind.
When do you need your backup, Sean?
If you can give it to me by tomorrow, that'd be great.
[laughing]
But if you can't, as soon as possible. No, I mean...
You said you were going to email it.
Yes, I can definitely email it to everybody. And by the way, this priority sheet is for council prioritization. It's not for the joint committee. So this is just for the council so that I can schedule resources, get people into the door, you know, whether, like I said, whether it's the county commissioner or it's a state personnel or a legislator, that this will help me address the issue that you want because I'll compile that. And then I'm going to be working with Tom. I will tell you that one of the things that we talked about, it seemed pretty reasonable with Tom, was that at the end, if people have line item questions, because that will be a supplement, it'll be an addendum to the entire budget, is that we're going to have a process where you can submit your requests for information, and Tom will provide public comment regarding that line item from his staff. That way, there's one consolidated resource of all those questions, and everyone gets that because there's been some citizens that said they would like to have that information as well. And I want to try to accommodate as much as possible that we can and meet everyone's needs. So that's with finance. The other items, I've got a couple of committees. The other item I wanted to mention was, oh, SEDCO, but you're going to cover that?
Mm-hmm.
He's going to cover SEDCO. I did actually attend my first ECO Maine meeting, and I got to tell you, it was pretty darn cool. I got a full tour and orientation of the facility and how they transfer everything from waste hauling, they bring it in, and they burn it, they sort it, burn it, and then convert it to electricity. Kevin Roach was an incredible mentor during that time in getting to see it. And then I attended my first meeting. I have sent an email to the chair on how you would like to have me communicate the updates regarding those meetings because it's pretty, I think it's pretty significant because of the cost impact long-term regarding, because as you know, we have a landfill in our town, and we have significant future costs regarding that landfill that's related out 30 years that are very hefty. So I would take any recommendations from the chair or from others on how you'd like us, us being Mike Scharr and I, to communicate those updates, including financials. There's some significant developments within the organization in the sense that, as you probably know, with fuel prices being down, that causes energy prices to increase, which is causing electricity from a manufacturing perspective to be down, which is causing a shortfall within the production that gets related to increased tipping fees to us. So there's things that impact us, and I'd just like to know how you would like me to communicate that. They have a great semi-annual report that they just produced, including financial statements that are high-level. They don't get into a lot of detail, but we can actually ask for those at the Scarborough level about what our contribution is. I'd love to provide that to you, so I'll do whatever you would like because I know that we haven't really received a report. And I have talked to Kevin about at least doing a semi-annual report from him, if not, at least an annual report from the director, and maybe a semi-annual from Mike and I. I just want to know what you guys, what you folks would like to have because it's a significant partnership, and it's a long-term partnership, and I don't think that we should forget about it because I remember the days when we did. And I don't want to see that happen again, so.
Arthur?
Yeah, let me just update you on SEDCO, one development that Karen Martin wished to pursue, and that is to begin the process of having each councilor be able to meet with one of the larger businesses in town, this one-on-one connection, which she feels is important to get people to really understand what the town council is doing and thinking. And she's going to, she started with me. We're going to be meeting with one of the larger healthcare providers since I had a background in representing healthcare providers in a past life, so.
I volunteer for all restaurants, so.
All restaurants. [laughing]
Hang out the restaurant.
So as you would always expect with Karen, she's right on top of these things, and very impressive.
Henry?
Regretfully, due to my illness, I was not able to attend either long-range planning or conservation commission. I was just looking at the conservation commission notes, and I just wanted to note that Peter Slavinsky is going to be making a presentation to the town council on February 4th, and Jessica's nodding, and that the subject of this meeting will be a section of the shoreline at Pine Point near Pillsbury Drive, subject to a state conservation easement. It was noted that illegal paths and sand fences have been obstructed by homeowners in response to natural, I can't talk, and man-made processes impacting the area, and his presentation will discuss the dynamics of these processes. So I thought, you know, as fellow councils, you might be interested in knowing that that is coming up. And also, there was a notation from J.H.A. says there's an audit going on with the EPA regarding separate stormwater sewer overflow and whatever, and we're expecting a report in 60 days on that. Tomorrow, I will be spending the whole day in Augusta, lucky me, with the Legislative Policy Committee for the Maine Municipal Association. I have a packet about the stick, the various bills and whatever that have been introduced. Some of them are still just titles. For example, there are 13 titles in there doing with casinos. So we can expect that that's going to possibly come back. One of them was introduced by Representative Vashon. I haven't seen the language of it yet. There's, obviously, we'll be discussing the impact of budget and how as a municipal association, we will be reacting or lobbying or working on these various things. So I'll give you guys an update when I get back, but, yeah.
All right. How about you, Peter?
Yeah, actually, some of the committees that haven't met all met all in the same night.
[laughing]
So it's a little busy. Just kind of some real quick updates with Shellfish Conservation. They spent a little bit of time talking about the season and maybe extending some of that time. The issues that they are facing though, and I know Tom's been involved and is helping them, there are some issues with federal label laws and other things that will be discussed at their next meeting. I think, Tom, you offered to kind of help guide them through that process, so that's kind of on their agenda. Same night Coastal Harbors met, and again, they talked a little bit about the dredge project being done. They did raise some concerns about, there still seem to be some areas that maybe they felt weren't dredged the right depth. But I think, again, Tom's been involved, and some of that may involve ledges, and they weren't able to move the material. I think the Army Corps of Engineers is going to do a survey to figure out where they are and what they've done. So that was sort of one issue. And then I mentioned some issues with the lifts on the pier, but I think, Tom, you said they were going to come down and get them repaired.
Been repaired already.
On the 13th, also, the Transportation Committee met, and they had some interesting conversations. They were asked to really investigate all of the railroad crossings and some of the noises with the whistles. They've done a lot of work. They actually have some answers. They're going to come back with a proposal to the council, so we'll expect that. They've done some work on updating and putting in an extra right-hand turn lane into the homes' paint road sort of intersection. They say it'll increase traffic flow by about 30%. They're going to be coming back with a proposal for us, showing what that is and some estimates. Great news, they're moving ahead with the eastern trail section, at least from Pleasant Hill over to... Hill over to South Portland. They hope to be able to start construction this summer, which is a great thing for all those that kind of enjoy that. They're also going to be working in the future on some crosswalk policies, age-friendly communities, some transit awareness. And then just yesterday, I met with the seniors group, they reviewed their financials year to date, they're on target, they have taken a look at the draft budget for next year already, and it's relatively flat, so that's good news. They are talking with IT about trying to improve sort of their communication platform to make it easier for seniors to kind of get in and get information and navigate. And there was some conversation about, some of the seniors are really asking about, is there some way that they can get more use of our public facilities, especially some of the school facilities for meetings, and pickleball seems to be an issue that keeps coming up, so I don't, you know, so that was sort of the conversation. Thank you.
And I...
This evening, before our workshop, the Fair Hearing Authority got together. It's probably the first time the Fair Hearing Authority has gone together in probably 15 or 20 years.
Oh.
We got together merely Jacqueline Mandrake and our human resources manager, and Rennie Daniel, who is the general assistance coordinator or project leader, kind of went through the process of how a person gets general assistance, and went through the process of if somebody wants to oppose a decision, how it comes to us, and how it's done. It was very educational, this is the committee right here, and hopefully, we'll never have to use it, but...
And the good news is, we haven't had to use it today, which is...
Which was really interesting to me.
Kudos to the team, they do a great job.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing that I have, besides all the other updates, was just ordinance met, excuse me, ordinance met yesterday, we talked a lot about parking, parking, beach parking. Pine Point and Higgins are both having some parking issues, we're working on those, and hopefully, oh, fingers crossed, we'll have something to send to the council. We really, I'm really going to try to push hard to get those wrapped up before the season starts, because both of those areas are in need of our help. So that's really it for me.
Okay. Tom, well?
Yeah, thank you. So one of the items I forgot to mention was that my other position is I'm the liaison of the school board, so I just wanted to provide a general update regarding that position. I did have a wonderful opportunity to meet with the chairwoman of the school board, Donna Beely, to really, that first meeting was more intended to kind of get to know you, and to set a baseline about our relationship, and, you know, what we can talk about freely, and to really develop the relationship, and she was extremely open, as I think she will be open to everyone on the school board, she's actually a very wonderful person. I do want to mention that I did receive a couple of comments, I asked her if she could provide some update regarding, you know how questions are asked around town, you know, you never know, with kids and people, and you never... And so there's been this contiguous question around the future of technology, and whether technology is just limited to under eight, under the eighth grade, or if it's going to eventually expand from nine to 12. And I just wanted to mention that I did ask her that question, and I wanted the public to know the response, and that is that the school department actually, in the past budget cycle, budgeted, and I'm going to use extremely rough numbers, I don't have exacts, I don't want anybody to say, well, it was 520,000, I'm going to use extremely rough numbers because it's more about the content of the conversation than it is about the number. So the district actually budgeted about $500,000, and there was some speculation that that really was about predetermining how the school department may try to bring in technology into the nine through 12. And so I did ask cordially to the chairwoman, and she responded wonderfully, that that really was money that was spent in what was called technology advancement for the district wide. It was about bringing up, and I'm going to be general because there was a lot of specific information, it was about bringing up existing services to par so that the school department could teach, and the school department could function. It did not support necessarily the nine through 12 technology that has been kind of floated around and talked about as far as laptops and other pieces. It was about bringing the building's internet code up to date, it was all the other pieces that go into that that you can kind of imagine. I just wanted to kind of bring that forward and answer because it's an open conversation, and it's an open dialogue with them, and I really appreciate her providing that answer. And if there's any other questions, you know, I kind of look at my role as being kind of that filter, and she's happy to help me answer those questions and develop the relationship as well, and so if there's any questions or anything, I am going to be speaking to them. I've kind of worked out with her as that liaison ship, I'm going to be speaking at their next meeting in February. The goal is like every other meeting, I don't need to be there every meeting, I was there when I was on the school board once before, and while it was pleasure, I don't need to necessarily do that again. So God bless them for what they do, but I will be at their next meeting, so if there's anything that you would like to share, please email me, and I'll be happy to share it with them.
Okay. On to me, so where am I? Appointments met this evening, we do have two names we would like to post, or a few names, I should say. We'd like to move David Kirsten and Michael Wallace to full voting members on the Energy Committee, and would also like to move Timothy Peters as a full voting member on the Housing Alliance. And also, sorry, Historic Preservation will be meeting Tuesday, February 3rd at 6:30, which is a Tuesday PM. They will be looking at, as you know, they had a presentation with the workshop, they'll be hopefully going over some of the zoning language, coming back from Dan about before, prior to that coming to the council, which would be the fourth meeting. Also, Housing Alliance, I did just want to share with you some good news, which is the Habitat Project did receive its DEP permitting, which is what they have been waiting for. So that project pretty much should be green light off that, and...
Back to planning board for one last review.
Back to planning board for one more, but, so we're past the biggest part of the hurdle, so it's very likely that we will see the fruition and breaking ground this year, so. Nice job, you guys. With that, that's it for me for committee reports, and jump over to Tom for the manager report.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick highlights, if I could, some of these I've mentioned to council, but I think they're worthy of mentioning publicly as well. Many may recall the library, this past or this current budget year, had a project to expand really some of the internal office space, it was about a $200,000 CIP item that was approved. To their credit, they've rethought that approach and have come up with a less costly and less invasive project. It's going to require, it's a very limited shutdown, so I want to acknowledge and appreciate their efforts in being thoughtful about the use of tax dollars, and they're still going to be able to accomplish what they want to. Also, I'm pleased to mention that, due in large part to our efforts for safety improvements, and this council witnessed us receiving an award lately, where that matters is that our experience modifications have come down less than par, meaning we pay, we actually have a 13% savings on premiums, and that translates to a $54,000 savings in this budget, so it really is a good reminder that safety does pay in many, many ways, not, including the bottom line. Staff has been exploring something called age-friendly communities, this is a program now taking up through AARP, we don't necessarily need to combine our efforts with them, but they've got at least a framework to be thinking about different ways that we can prepare and be age-friendly, and that can really take shape in many, many different forms and needs to. So this is an effort that really would spread across many of the existing committees and departments, and we look to kind of broaden that conversation further. ECO Maine is actually in their ECO Excellence Award timeframe, Friday this week is the deadline, I can email out the application, but every member community has the opportunity to put forward an individual or a group, send something that's worthy of recognition, so we're always looking for good ideas, I'll send that around, it does require a pretty quick turnaround, so I'll do it before I go home tonight. Last two things I have done, as the council's aware, a very preliminary assessment or analysis of the impact of the proposed state budget. I say preliminary because it's just that, this is going to change, it's now a legislative process, and evidently, it will ebb and flow over the next couple of months. So in concert with the Finance Committee, we'll continue to kind of monitor that progress, and we'll try to do periodic analysis just so we have a sense of where we are. And with the cooperation of Councilor Caterina, we are coordinating a legislative delegation meeting on February 18th, and I suspect that might be a focal point of that conversation. And lastly, to the dredge issue, I did have the occasion to speak with the project coordinator, Mike Walsh, today. The survey is not in his hands yet, he did relate in conversations with the contractor, they actually dredged 150 feet further beyond the end of the channel, and for anyone familiar with that area, the shelling that's occurred with Mother Nature's help extends almost all the way out to the Prost neck yacht club. And so though it was beyond the congressional mandate of the federal channel, practically speaking, you need to be able to get to the channel for it to be effective. So there still may be problems further out because of that shelling, and frankly, even since they pulled out, winter storms and wind and surf will already start to bring that material back in. But by all accounts, the contractors certainly met their obligations, but we'll stay on top of it further. Thank you.
All right, on to council member comments, I'll sit on the other end, I'll start with Peter.
I'm all set, thank you.
Adam?
I'd just like to thank Sean and Peter and Bill for the outstanding job they've done so far with the Finance Committee, I mean, this is going to be one extremely difficult process, and I think with a new approach and more communications between the town council and board, I think it's going to be very successful, and I wish you good luck, and I'm sure everybody here on the council is going to stay right on top of it.
Thank you.
Kate?
I just wanted to say condolences to Chairwoman Holbrook for the passing of her grandfather, and also, it's her son's birthday today, so we all should wrap up as soon as possible so she can get home.
Ah.
And that's it.
G.M.
I really don't have anything to add today, I'll pass.
Bill?
I did want to recognize Doug Bennett as the Person of the Year in Scarborough, teacher here in town, and it's a very nice award, and he obviously sounds like a terrific person.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Wanted the council members to be aware that the Rules and Policy Committee will be meeting in the next week, and that will be announced soon, the actual date. Anything that town council members think might be appropriate for rules to consider, this would be an appropriate time to bring it to our attention, I think it's Peter, G.M., and myself are sitting on the, the reason, one of the reasons, there's a couple of items, but the one that obviously we all kind of worked with a little bit at the last meeting was Mr. P.O.'s tax foreclosure, and I think what we're going to, and of course, it brought to light that there was this period of, since 1957, there's been a lack of action taken on any of those, and our town manager wants to be able to clean that up and get us back in a position. So there's a real fairness question when you're dealing with a whole series of properties. So one of the things we're going to be doing is looking at the question of making sure our rules treat all of these properties fairly, all the past owners fairly. We'll also obviously be looking at the question of going forward, and whether or not that process is exactly the way we want it. It has this kind of two-tier system of if you have a residential property, there's a certain way in which you are treated with the opportunity to have a contingent sale, a conditional sale contract after we have acquired the property, you can still get it back. That's not true for non-residential properties, even though they're in the residential zone if they're... So we've got, we've got to look at that because there are all sorts of reasons why this happens, and so we need to kind of look at our principles about what are we trying to do here? And my own view is protect the town in the responsibility of collecting taxes, and otherwise be fair to all concerned. So that's going to be a dialogue that we'll be having in front of us during the next month.
Tom?
Thank you. A couple items, first, condolences to the chairwoman, I'm sorry to hear about your family, and congratulations to your son's birthday as well. God knows one year older means that you're one year older, so congratulate.
(laughing).
I thought I needed to remind you, but no, congratulate. I actually, something I heard at the end of the last meeting that I want to mention today is that I do want to mention about Tony Atato Sr.'s passing. Mr. Atato was an incredible person, who I got to meet by chance, and I believe, I can't remember, I did actually try to look this up, I don't remember if he actually served as a selectman, or if he served both as a selectman and then as a counselor.
It's like counselor.
He definitely was a counselor, and I just want to mention his family because of course, Tony Jr. is our EMS director chief, and does an incredible job to the family. When you serve your community like he did, it's absolutely incredible, and it's a legacy to see how his children have served our community as well, and I just want to give my condolences to the family because he was an incredible person. He was actually the first person to call me when I came home to Scarborough in the early 2014 and said, tell me you're not stupid enough to run again, but I hope you do. And so it was a pleasant, pleasant to hear from him because he was an incredible person. So condolences to the family, especially to a former town counselor. I do want to mention, and whether it's by purpose or whether it's by accident, you know, one of the items that we had recently discussed regarding our workshop and our goals, it was thrown in at the last minute about casinos, and about that the town council should take a position regarding that, and I do appreciate the fact that it might rise to an issue that we should take issue with, because I personally believe, regardless of whether you're for or against an item, that the citizens as a whole need to decide, it's not one for the council. And the great thing is that we have ordinances in place that allow that can immediately go to public opinion or public vote, so I appreciate that because it's a very sensitive issue. The other item I wanted to mention is that, I just want, at least for my colleagues, but for the public as well, is that in today's technology environment, there's so many ways of communicating, and I want to apologize to some extent, but not really, and that is that there is a lot of communication by this council, by email, in which public opinion is shared, and I'm extremely reserved in commenting in on that because I think that that information should be really shared publicly, especially if it rises to a point in which either the manager must gather data, provide an opinion on whatever it might be, so I don't opt in on that, but only because I want that to be here. I'm not trying to call anybody out necessarily, but I'm just simply asking is that I think that more of what we communicate by email needs to be done as an agenda item, if it's truly worthy of a conversation. And sometimes that conversation is just simply, I agree, not, whatever it might be. I've been bitten a couple times by email, so I just don't simply like to do that at this particular time, and I just think that it's better for us to do this in public, no matter what the item is, whether it's revenue sharing, whether it's dog ordinances, whatever it might be, I just encourage that if it's worthy of a conversation, that we have it as an item going forward. The other item I just wanted to mention was around ECO Maine. I really want to thank Michael Shaw, he has been our representative to ECO Maine for the past several years, really after a transition that happened when I was here before. He's done an incredible job, he has garnered the respect of our board, and has done a great leadership role for us. great leadership role for us, especially during all that transition in which some of our representation may not have been to the fullest extent, and I just really want to thank him, because we continue to garner the respect of the other communities as a result of our leadership back in the 90s and early 2000s, when we really forced ourselves to change EcoMaine, or what was then called RWS. And, you know, Mike serves on the Executive Committee and the Finance Committee as Vice-Chair, and he does, you know, Tom, just, you know, he does an incredible job for our town, and I just really want to thank him for that, as well as thank the town for appointing him, and I appreciate that. Last but not least is, it's about the state budget. I am getting inundated, because I don't know if it's Chair or being the Finance Committee, about the state budget, what the impact's gonna be, and I hate to be blunt, I have no stinking clue what's gonna happen, because the hostility in Augusta, no matter how unified they may try to say they are, it's gonna get worse. And the fact is that we have no idea really where everything is gonna follow. Now, we have some assumptions that I think are fairly easy, but we also have some local things that play into this, and all I'm asking is that those who have contacted me, and even those who just simply watch, be patient. I promise you that the Finance Committee's gonna be open and transparent about what we're dealing with, but it's gonna be an extremely difficult process, especially when we are in a need, or, I'm sorry, we are in a time of need, both at the municipal level as well as at the school level, but it's gonna come, it's gonna come down to principle, it's gonna come down to a little bit of ideology, and it's gonna come down to some basic economics, but it's gonna be extremely tough. And I just ask that all of us take an extreme, I don't wanna say passive approach, a respectful approach, and that's because while we can sit there and draw a line that says, it cannot be more than whatever the CPI is for veterans, or whatever the CPI is, sometimes that can't happen. I'm not saying it has to be higher, I'm not saying it can't be lower, I'm just simply saying is that we have to be open to the conversation, because the state budget, as it's been presented, is throwing an incredible barrier in the middle of the road, and we have to be aware of all of that. It's gonna be extremely tough, but I think we can get through it, and we can be a very good community at the end of that, so I just want to keep that in mind. Thank you.
So, I'm gonna make, at this time, the condolences that we usually offer to members in our community that have since passed, and so for Doris, the family of Doris Briggs, for the family of Irene Layton, for the family of Ruth Thompson, for the family of Kathleen Tompkins, and of course, my own grandfather, David Green, who passed away, sorry, so everyone talk about him. Certainly not, you know, he spent a lifetime here, not a lifelong resident, but he spent a lifetime, did marry my grandmother, who is a lifelong resident, so. Anyway, that's it for my comments. Most to do good. All right.